Well, are we ready to go, Grace?
I think we should be about ready. We got one more walking in.
Okay. Are we ready now, Grace?
Looks like everyone's here.
Okay. A call to order the meeting of the Cass County Planning Commission. Uh, who do we have taking the role today?
Joey, um, Mr. Mo- Mr. Munson?
Here.
Mr. Birch?
Here.
Mr. Guth?
Present.
Mr. Breitling?
Present.
Mr. Alton?
Here.
Dr. Mahoney?
Here.
Ms. Sabotny?
Here.
Ms. Shipner? Shiper?
Here.
Shiper, I'm sorry.
Okay. We do have a quorum. I would also like to, uh, uh, note the participants that may be on the phone or in, in the audience. Is there anyone else on the, on the phone or the computer here? Other than the commissioners?
Rashawn Slaton.
Dylan Slaton.
Bill Treeblasser.
Gary Laras.
Jerome Kravenoff.
Deborah Kravenoff.
Gary Shvinkie.
Tom Susi.
Jason Benson.
Grace Puppi.
Very good. Thank you for that. Uh, okay. And before you, the minutes of the July 23rd meeting, what are your wishes?
Hope to approve the petition.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing now, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. The item, we have public hearing items. Uh, we have number one, uh, continue the, uh, the hearing for, uh, application requesting a variance from the county subdivision standards to combine auditors lot three through six and part of seven returning to the property to a nine acre parcel located in Reed Township. Okay, Grace, would you bring us up to date in this? Oh, I come to think about this was, this was tabled. Is there a motion to remove this from the table?
So move, Breitling.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Birch.
Okay, the hearing, uh, the, the motion to table, remove from the table is non-defatable. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have it on the table again. Uh, Grace, would you give us an update on this, please?
Um, we did get the, that shows the, um... We did get the plat documents for the Cheyenne Valley Farm subdivision showing that, that road is a public right of way, so that case for the public. There's also included the warranty deed, um, showing that ingress and egress easement along lots two, three, and four on the west side there. And then there's also included all the plat documents, um, for auditor's lot two, three, seven with their description. And at the end of that, there should be comments that were submitted in writing from the residents.
Okay. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled on this. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
I guess I just want to say that, um, prior to purchasing this land, I had talked to, um, Jason Benson. I had had some phone calls with him. Um, told him what I wanted to do with the land, uh, and he never once had said anything to me about a forty acre rule. Um... I had talked to him about even having the possibility of multiple properties on there, which I don't want to do, but just, um... Op- option if I wanted it. Um, and then I went to the Reed Township meeting and they had said that they have no issues with it either. Um, so basically I was just ill informed that there is about the forty acre rule, that I need forty acres to build a, a house on this property.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Jason Benson. Uh, I guess to address, uh, Mr. Slaton's comment, I, I know this is a number of years ago and, um, I don't recall the conversation specifically, but, you know, um, with the bulk of the other lots in the area, part of that larger subdivision, um, I think that that was, uh... That was probably the, uh... My thought was that that was part of this, the platted subdivision, not, not realizing that it was a separate, um, audit lot that really, when we look at auditor's lots, uh, aren't, are, you know, the auditor's lots are there specifically for the purpose of defining irregular parcels and aren't designed to be used for development and, uh, and property sales versus, you know, platted, um, platted subdivision.
Oh, I have a question for Jason. Uh, on this particular, uh, a group of lots, so to speak, uh, it looked like in the paperwork that this was done in nineteen eighty-four or five, something like that. And, uh, you know, there was no so-called subdivision ordinance in effect at that time. The, the, this area is still viable as lots for development. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, uh, in our nineteen, I, I don't have a copy of our, uh, version of the subdivision ordinance, but nineteen ninety-six. Uh, I do have an eighty-six and then a, uh, eighty-nine version. And the eighty-nine version spells out that what you see where it says a plat of auditor's lot, you know, within, whether it's six, seven, um, that those are, that those are not considered a, a plat of, you know, and a legal subdivision. Um, but when we look at North Dakota Century Code, it does go back further beyond that, that, um, auditor's lots aren't, aren't designed for the transfer of, uh, of development rights. Um, but, you know, I guess I can't speak for what, how the, how that was enforced nearly thirty-five, thirty years ago, when these, when this was split and, and the other properties, uh, you know, like auditor's lot two was actually built. I don't know if that answered your question or not, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, I'm just, uh, trying to figure out, you know, what, what was being done back in, back in that time period and how things were being handled back then. And, uh, whether this was something that, you know, was commonly done or, or not, you know, there's a number of lots of, off of Forty-Eighth Avenue and that type of thing, and I'm assuming those were all auditor's lots.
Uh, Mr. Chair, correct. It, you know, some of those, um, on the south side of that Cheyenne Valley Farm subdivision or, uh, and Forty-Eighth Avenue, those lots were, uh, separate auditor's lots.
I have a question for Jason. This is Rocky Birch. This Cheyenne Valley subdivision that was plotted previously, there's lot, there's houses on this, but not according to what this map shows.
Uh, Mr. Birch, correct. The, all of the different lots that are part of that Cheyenne Valley subdivision have not been developed and there's probably four houses for, uh, the, the nine lots.
That were just half hazards, you put in there, not according to this flat map?
Correct.
The Cheyenne Valley rule, obviously, is not there.
That rule is there as, on most maps, specifically in this Forty-Eighth, uh, Forty-Eighth Avenue, um, subdivision.
So, so we're not even, this isn't even dealing with that property then? It's, it's-
Right, that, the main thing with that, that subdivision is that it, um, that it does, you know, there's been some discussion with some of the residents about the access to Forty-Eighth Avenue or that, or what's on here is the Cheyenne Valley Road and whether it's a public road or a private road. And so the subdivision, plat, and Valley Farm is, Grace included that, basically, to indicate, you know, that it is a public road and that any, and, and then, you know, she also provided the, um, the document where it shows highlighted in yellow that, uh, that there is the, uh, uh, access agreement with the thirty feet on either side, that's an egress, a walk-in up to Forty-Eighth. So, so that would mean then just to, uh, again, those issues that people were bringing up about it not being a public road and not being able to access it.
Well, what we're dealing with is the road from Forty-Eighth Avenue southward to that southeast quarter, the northeast quarter. And that's obviously a private road.
That's a, it's a private road, but, but there is, but there is a name in it. Um, and that's, is, uh, basically all, uh-
It was, it was included in the warranty deed, the description of the egress?
Right, okay. What is keeping us from allowing them to have an easement off of County Road Seventeen? What, what is stopping that from happening? That's, that's the biggest line of contention right now, as I see it.
The, uh... So, from an access standpoint, it is, it would be viable. It's a little bit less than what our standard distance is from Forty-Eighth down to, uh, down to the quarter line, but that would provide, but there is only one access from the Fifty-second Avenue to the north down to the quarter line. And so it would generally fall within our regulation for, for adding that access point there. I mean, one of the challenges with that is that generally the, the water that breaks out flows from kind of the open field area south of Forty-Eighth to the east, looking down along County Fourteenth. So, if any, uh, you're raising that, that road, they would have to make sure that there's plenty of capacity for water to flow underneath, uh, underneath that access so that it's not impeding water bumping blocking it and raising the, the water elevation to the south of that road and-
I have a question for Dylan.
Yep, Dan?
You're the, oh, you're, you're the owner or?
Yep, my wife and I.
What is your actual plan for this? What, I mean, what is your plan? What is, what do you want to do?
What I'd like to do is build a house on, you know, kind of like the, the northwest, uh-
House?
Well, it'd be like, on, a house on lot number three. It's my plan. Um, and then if allowable, I would like to build a shop, uh, right to the south of that on four and then just leave five, six, and seven, um, undeveloped.
Or what would you do with this?
Well, I'm, I, I can't do nothing because I don't have, you know, I mean, I can't put houses on it and I can't subdivide it because of your, um, subordinance rules. You know, I have no intention to do it, you know, I just want a house with some acreage.
Uh, acres. So are you, would you rather have access then from County Road Seventeen?
First, personally, I would rather not. I would rather not turn off the highway, um, onto that, you know, um... My, well, the way I look at it is why add another approach when there's not one needed? Um, to me, it's, you know, hazard, if you will. Another thing is you add, that ditch is wide open now. You add another approach in there, you're going to hold back water, no matter how big of a culvert you put in. You know, so it's going to be another thing to hold back water, which is an issue with everyone that lives up there, is they're always afraid of water flow and affecting other people, so.
Well, my understanding is that lot three is, uh, that road coming servicing that is just a glorified prairie trail?
Correct.
So what would be your plan there?
Uh, put some gravel on there and make an approach out of it?
Who would do that?
Uh, border states maybe?
David Gust, the, the model line here is where they're asking to grant a variance from the subdivision ordinance to not have to have a deed restriction on adjoining Forty Acres, allow us to afford, right? That's, that's our main job.
Yes.
There's nothing in here that, having been plotted beforehand, that its grandfather did, they need a variance, but they need a deed restriction in order to plat this, right?
I think that's, that's what we're really hearing inside, is that they grant this variance.
Yeah, but who's to keep them from building on all five of those additional lots at this point?
Mr. Birch, I, I think that's why he's proposed to build, put all of these into one lot, so that it would only be one lot with one billable right for a residential structure and then, you know, another building. That's, that was the reason for combining it into one versus still having five separate lots. That way, there would be control in the future that he wouldn't go ahead and develop additional houses on the other lots. And then, in the, in the future, he would have to go through and subdivide, further subdivide those if he wanted to build on them. Based on the available open acreage would be viable until it's within the, the area of what's happening.
So let me get this straight. Staff is recommending that we accept the approval of this. Is that right? That's staff's recommendation?
That's, you know, um, right. So, you know, basically, uh, you know, we haven't, while we haven't had, uh, variance, many requests for variance in the past, this is, you know, acreage that's, that, uh, that had development around it prior to different, uh, changes in our subdivision ordinance.
You know, and with that forty acre rule, I mean, I get it. It makes total sense ten miles, but I'm trying to put a house that, there's a house within five hundred feet of where I'm proposing. You know, so I mean, it's not like I'm leapfrogging the development. You know, I'm trying to keep it tight because I know there's going to be future expansion in twenty, thirty years, whenever West Fargo decides to start coming up that way. Um, you know, I mean, that's all.
Okay, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Benson here. I, I think that, you know, and looking at the materials and that type of thing, each one of these lots has been plotted and it has the plating documents attached to it. It's, uh, had a, has a road easement. It's done everything that would normally be done. The thing I don't like about the whole thing is there's, there's five lots there that, you know, basically, we don't have a lot of control over. If it gets combined, eh, together into one lot as a subdivision, then after that, uh, nothing else can be done. We have the control then. So I would like to see this, this variance be passed and, uh, that we, we get this thing cleaned up. And, uh, you know, the, the owners of this property do have, you know, develop, have, have property rights, just like all the rest of us that own property. And, uh, I'd like to see them, uh, you know, have their little, 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 uh, uh, yard in the country, so to speak, if that's what they wish to have.
But it hasn't been planted, correct? That's why we're, they're asking for a variance, because it's not been planted, just auditor's lots.
Okay.
Boxed here's-
I'm looking at the documents and the, and it says, for instance, uh, auditor's lot three, plat of.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Jason Benson. And I think that, that is one of the confusing parts about some of these older documents is the fact that it says a plat and that a plat of an auditor's lot is still just an auditor's lot versus a plat, a platted subdivision, um, which, according to North Dakota Century Code, is, you know, something that comes with development rights and, and therefore, you know, can be, can be sold, um, with those rights. And so this is something that, I know Grace and I have talked about how, uh, because there's a number of auditor's lots out there that have been developed over the years. And, and part of this is, uh, you know, trying to, trying to manage some of these lots that have been split twenty, thirty, forty years ago through the auditor's lot process. And in, in a lot of cases, um, the landlord goes to the township, gets a building permit, and they build on it. And, you know, and then it's, it's done. Um, in this case, Mr. Slaton came to asking about a subdivision and, and if you should plat versus just getting the permit from the township and, and building on it, um, without, without us really looking at it in depth like this. And, and that's, um, you know, I, I think that's something that's, as we review and update our subdivision, we're going to address some of that, that should be looked at, addressed, these types of challenges, um, for, for auditor's lots especially, where there's no available land to be restricted around them.
Mr. Chair, this is-
Anyway, because-
I have a question or two?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, the public hearing item talks about an application returning the property to one parcel. Do we need a, another document whereby the request is to, uh, plat this as one parcel?
Mr. Breitling, the, that, I think that's the intent for Mr. Slaton is that once he's, once he's received a variance, that he would come back with the, with the subdivision, the, um, documents, you know, fully developed and, um, through a, through an entering firm or surveying firm.
Well, if we've granted a variance, how are we going to enforce him to do so?
Uh, Mr. Chair, or Mr., uh, Mr. Breitling, I think the, that, that would be part of the variance, that it would be, uh, based on the fact that he would return with a full subdivision application, um, and then, and then that, that would have to go through this board again to approve the subdivision based on the variance. And that his, his request was so that he didn't spend three or four thousand dollars getting all of the survey work and, and, uh, drawings complete and then not have a variance approved. Uh, he was, he was requesting the variance so that he can then go back and, and do that additional work.
In other, uh, in other words, what we're asked to do is grant a variance conditioned upon his filing of a, a plat for one lot for these?
I'm correct.
Is that your understanding?
And, and I guess, uh, going at that, uh, I want to, yeah, yeah, that, I, yes, correct.
I, I have one other comment, and that's, um, on the second page of the staff report. You, you indicate that this property is bound, bound on the east by I-29. Shouldn't that be, uh, County Seventeen?
Yes, it should be County Seventeen.
Okay, is there any further public comment?
The, after this, Keith Munson, the access off of Seventeen is a possibility, but they also, am I correct in saying, they also have a right to go on Forty-Eighth and then south on that road, they have a right to that also? As an easement? And where, okay. That, that doesn't pertain, I guess, to this variance. It's just a question of what will they, what would they do? Who maintains that, that, who's maintaining that road as access? Who maintains that, that, who's maintaining that road and access?
My understanding is the neighborhood.
The neighborhood.
Yeah, just the...
Private landowners.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like private roads that we all, everybody in the community just...
So do you have assessments for that, or you just?
They just, like, just...
A.C.P.?
Yeah.
Travel or snow removal or any kind?
Yeah.
I personally got involved in the snow removal there, and it's a bugger. Snow goes in 48th Avenue like you cannot believe. And I've been up there several times rescuing. Right.
He does have removal equipment, so he can help the injured. And also that goes to, his mom owns Quarter Day TV, so she can act as a civic and be a help and stuff too.
I think come off of 17, I would.
Okay, are you further public comment?
Jerome Kravenhoff here. I'd like to know when the 40-acre restriction was put in. What year?
It was 2006.
Okay. I know Harwood has a 4-acre. I'm just wondering for my curiosity.
That was, that was put in to allow for rural, generally for...
A systematic development that comes to that.
Right.
Okay, any further public comment?
I guess, Deborah Kravenhoff, I just am speaking for pretty much all of the property owners out in that area off of 48. And we would really all push for the entrance to the property of the property owners off of County 17, if that's possible. Just to avoid the extra travel and all of that going, I don't know. Just people sent letters and stuff just to read what they wrote.
Okay, any other public comment? Harry Nona will close the public hearing and go back to the regular commission meeting. Folks, you've heard the, heard the discussion. What are your wishes?
David Gus. I've talked to Reed Township about this a little bit also. It sounds like they improperly issued a building permit because they adopted the county ordinance into their zoning ordinances too. They would also have required a 40-acre de-restriction. But, you know, they were somewhat confused about it as how much townships are. You know, the whole point of this ordinance was to kind of prevent stuff like this. That is a highly flood-prone area. Our daycare used to be in this group of homes on San Baghdad place many, many times. It's, it's, we couldn't de-restrict it because all the land surrounding it is, is in the floodplain. And I just, I guess, struggle that if we're going to give a variance for this, how do we deny a variance for anybody who wants one outside of the de-restriction? So if there's a problem with this ordinance, let's change it. But to grant these variances like this, I think it's just going to set us up for future, future problems. I think this is a perfect example of why that ordinance was put in place in the first place. To prevent this kind of stuff. This, this, I mean, this development in the floodplain is, you know, is why Far was in the trouble there. And I just, I just thought it's just a bad idea.
Mr. Birch here. But all we're doing is combining five potential problems into one here.
Well, but we're trying, those could be developed...
What?
None of those could be developed with our ordinance as it sits. I mean, that's...
It's already been platted, Jerome.
We've determined it has not, it's only, they're only auditor lots. They're not buildable platted lots. Correct? I mean, that's what the staff has determined.
We have authorized one of those that need a 40-acre de-restriction before they can move forward. We have authorized other developments or properties to be built on less than 40 acres in this, in these meetings.
They have to have, they have to have a 40-acre de-restriction on adjoining land along with them.
And maybe just to clarify that the 40 acres, if someone has 40 acres, they want to split five acres to build a, a house, they would de-restrict the remaining 35 acres as there's one buildable lot, one development right for 40 acres. And then, so again, if it is a five-acre lot, you de-restrict the remaining 35.
So Christopher, this is actually then these five lots that are out there should never have even a been auditor's lot then. It was misleading to even put them into auditor's lots? Is there not viable property without the 40 acres?
Generally, you know, looking at it today, to split five lots like that would not be, would not be approved. If a current landowner just went and split those, then it'd request the recorder's office for five auditor's lots because they're, auditor's lots are generally there purely for tax purposes. To take something that has a meat and bounds description, maybe it falls a river or has a very odd description that's a paragraph long in surveyor's terms, and it turns that into auditor's lot one. So for tax, for according it for tax purposes, it's much, much easier and more defined piece of land. But it's not, it's not, auditor's lots aren't designed as, as this was put together back in the 80s having all these separate lots that were basically for, for development.
It can be done for agricultural purposes.
Generally, it's agricultural purposes.
Okay, what are your wishes, folks?
Can we see the suggested motion, please? When you build on this lot, your intent is to build it high enough for your blood frame level?
Yes, so it would have to meet all the FEMA requirements. My building permit would go through Reed Township, who uses Houston Engineering. Houston Engineering would inspect and do everything to meet the FEMA standards.
Make the recommended motion.
I second that.
Motion, is there a second?
I second that, Rocky Birch.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
To accept signings.
To approve the variance and then come back and plat.
This is a...
Any more discussion?
Do we need to insert in that recommendation that it's conditional upon the filing and approval of a plat, bringing this back into one, one track?
Yes.
That would be effective.
Is maker the motion on the second or both good with us?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Harry Nona will call for the vote. Would you call the roll, please?
I'll, you want to call the roll, please?
Again?
Yeah, for the vote.
Yeah. Okay, I have Mahoney and Birch.
No, you just ask, because we're all, we're all going to vote.
Yeah, just, yeah, call the roll as a voting roll.
This is just...
Mr. Logie?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
No.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
No.
Mr. Breitling?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Hi.
Ms. Devatney?
Yes.
Ms. Shippner? Shippner, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, the motion has passed. Okay, we'll move on to number two. We have a public hearing scheduled for the minor subdivision plat of Kellerman Eric subdivision. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
Thank you.
Grace, do you want to give us the rundown on this, please?
Yep, the applicant seeking approval of a minor subdivision entitled Kellerman subdivision to plat one lot subdivision to approximately 2.93 acres. According to the applicant, subdivision is requested to separate the house and garage from remaining property. The sole ownership maintenance of the subdivision will be private. Subdivision will use existing road access off of 53rd Street and digits for storm, storm sewer conveyance for O R unexpected.
Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, Harry Nona will close the public hearing and go back to the regular commission meeting. Folks have heard everything and have seen all the information. What are your wishes?
Pretty simple, what the proof is presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Christopher, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Harry Nona will call for the vote. Would you do a roll call vote again, please?
Mr. Logie?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Breitling?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney?
Hi.
Ms. Devatney?
Yes.
Ms. Shippner?
Christopher. Yeah.
Very good. The motion has passed. Okay, next item on the agenda is also a public hearing schedule. There's a hearing for a minor subdivision plat of K F N W A M 1200 subdivision. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Grace, would you give us the rundown on this, please?
I was just going to say Greg Schmick, I'm here for T F and the legal.
They're looking to plat one lot subdivision of approximately 13.02 acres. The subdivision is requested since the radio tower is property due to sale of land from the previous property in a tower array currently outside. Responsibility will be private and then they'll use existing road access off of 16 with digits for storm sewer.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
That tower is just right across the road. Now, is that right? Where's the...
The current tower, I guess.
Yeah.
The current towers are in South Fargo off of 52nd Avenue itself.
What is the intent of this property, this 13 acres, or is it 10?
Just put up a four-tower array. It'll be four radio towers, a transmitter building, and that's it.
Why do you need to subdivide it when it's already been, has it been subdivided or no?
No.
North is the River Valley western line, and all of that is basically in that southwest quarter of which for a road line, it's just a land. So this would be a separate subdivision for, for those 13 acres for the, the new towers along with the de-restriction for the day.
So you're subdividing that out of the southwest quarter of section 32? Don't you have to get S T C approval on that?
Yes.
Has that been obtained?
Yeah, that's, the FAA is good with it. And so, and we're working on the S T C approval for the adjustment on our license to move the towers.
Okay, any further public comment?
How tall are these towers? They'll be about 199 feet. They'll be just short of 200 feet, so they will not be lit. They won't have that.
And you're moving them because it's better or what?
Well, because we're selling the property we're currently on.
Oh.
And, and that's, that's why we approached the landowner here and wanted to, want to purchase this section.
Your current towers are on the intersection of 52nd and the Better's Bowl.
Yeah, in the southwest corner there, right. Yeah, right across the street to the west from the U-Haul dealership there.
Okay, any further public comment? Harry Nona will close the public hearing and go back to the regular commission meeting. Folks, you've heard the information. What are your wishes?
Have we received any, anything from other landowners around there? I see there must be a property right to the west of this.
Uh, that's a cemetery.
Is that?
It's a cemetery.
They don't complain.
I have not...
They don't have to blame you. It's going to make my job harder down there, but it's not... Four towers you're putting in there? Yes, yeah.
I'm just curious, what is the spacing between the towers?
Spacing between the towers should be in the neighborhood of about 200 feet to 400 feet. And another reason that we're moving to is the upgrade that the power company did, adding steel poles along the east side of our property. And it really played havoc with our signal. Having the, having the upgraded power line there and the two poles there. How far is the Capex 2029 from you there? I'm not sure.
Okay, is there, is there a motion on this? Okay, is there, is there a motion on this or not?
This is Rocky Birch, I move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
This is DeWes and Devatney, all second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote. Would you call a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Logie?
Yes.
Mr. Munson?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Breitling?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Dr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Devatney?
Yes.
Ms. Shipper? Yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
Grace, is there any new business?
Thank you.
No, there is nothing, nothing new.
Any old business?
Oh, I have some new business. Is there a reason why we have to have these meetings at seven? We're all adults, we can, I mean, at eight.
I need to be to work at eight.
There's a lot of research.
Yeah.
You're, you're.
If we're, if we're going to accommodate everybody that serves on this board, basically everybody has jobs that they need to be at at eight o'clock. Uh, we used to have them at eight, but it was a disaster. Lots of different occasions, we couldn't get a quorum. Ever since we went to seven, we've always got a quorum. So this is why we're doing it that way.
I think you're going to lose that.
Never mind.
Move to a turn, David Gus.
Second, Olson, move to a turn, is there a second?
Second, Olson.
Ms. Shipper.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks say no. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We got her done before eight, Dwayne.
Yeah, I see that.
That's always been right there, it's great.
Another meeting.